In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, entitled Public Publics Meeting Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notices of March 26, 2012. That notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Sun, Star Ledger, and the North Jersey Herald News, and mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk advertising the Nutley Sun on April 5, 2012, posted on the official website. This is an official meeting. Please stand. Thanks, sir. I believe this do rely in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, formation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, please.
Here. Here. Mrs. Zizinski?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Russo?
Here.
Mrs. Soler?
Here.
Sharon?
Here.
Zado?
Here.
Here. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as distributed?
A motion to approve the minutes is ready.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Full as a favor? Opposed? Appeals are approved as distributed. Correspondence? No correspondence. Superintendent's report, Mr. Lozner.
Thank you, Mr. Capello. Is that better? It seems like there's been a great long time since our last board meeting. I want to start off with a report on this storm. Obviously, we were hit with the worst storm that the township has faced in over a hundred years. There were a lot of repercussions, and I wanted to thank, first of all, the commissioners, Mr. Tom Nicolet, for all the work that he and the Office of Emergency Management did, including the school district in that process, a lot of shared decision-making, and as always, our number one goal was to make sure we kept everyone safe. We tried to make sure that communications went toward that. We, again, at this point, through school messaging, phone calls, text messages, email, as well as using the website and Twitter, trying to get every possible thing. Just want to restate again, before there is another situation where that would happen to be, that please take the opportunity now to sign up for those that ever is most convenient to you so that you are informed. We got a great deal of positive feedback from the township that we were clear, concise, and communicative. We were getting the message out as soon as we had information, and as we said from the beginning, we want our website to be the primary source for all information for anyone regarding the school district, and hopefully we lived up to that during this time. I want to take two seconds to thank two people in district. The first is Mr. Rianmeister. Just want to make sure I made special commendation. He, like the other person I'm going to mention, myself, 24/7 the entire duration of this storm and its fallout, making sure not only were our communications up, but when the township lost its emergency desk, we were able to, through Mr. Rianmeister's creativity, piggyback through our system to make sure that their communications was down only for a short period of time. So a huge thank you for your service also. I don't see him, but Mr. Phil Nicolet on our side, again, nonstop to make sure our buildings were safe and secure, that we're getting the information that we needed, that we're communicating with the Office of Emergency Management. He didn't sleep for a good number of days straight, so definitely want to take a second to publicly thank him for the service of the district. Finally, Washington School, we did sustain some facility damage, and again, just to clarify for everyone, we had sustained some damage to our geothermal system there, which is providing heat to the building. To make sure that we're clear, there are two other redundant heating systems in the building that maintain the environment, so there's no concern there, but we're out working with FEMA and with members from the state to make sure that we get the repairs as quickly as possible, and hopefully to no cost to the district. Tonight, happy to say that our Gay Street Alliance at the high school hosted a chalk walk and a candlelight vigil. They've done it for a number of years now, and I did not get to make it over there, could not be out of my office, but I heard it was well-attended, and again, once again, a terrific event for the students and for the community, so I want to thank them for that. As always, we've been remoting ourselves as a learning school district. We want to make sure that we are cutting it when it comes to serving our students and serving the community. To that end, just a reminder, Ms. Vali, I have been in classrooms a regular basis conducting observations. We're still doing what we're calling 20s in district, where a group of administrators are going to classrooms together so that we can learn together based on what we see, bring to work a new framework that we've instituted last year and this year. We have to start conversations regarding our administrative framework, which is due to the state by the end of the year. There are only three or four that we're actually allowed to choose from. We want to have conversations with the association and figure out what we want to do based on what the state is guiding us to do, moving forward. That'll start as well. The last piece, as far as learning districts, all these come together, so there's a process, there's a culture in district where we're always looking at what we do to see if it's effective and if it can be done better. To that end, our strategic planning work is moving full throttle ahead. You'll hear certain reports from some board members based on the work of any of the state's different action teams that have gone on, and I'll leave it to the members of the board to report after that. It's kind of a technology slash assessment. We had parent-teacher conferences recently, through all reports, went extremely well. Teachers make themselves available for a one-on-one conversation with parents about their students' student progress in class, and along with that, we issued report cards for the first marking period. Want to stop and take note that, other than elementary, which this should be the only marking period that this happens, everything went out through the parent portal, so we will truly try and be paperless and be seamless at getting information out. It's one more feature within the portal that we've opened. As well, though, Mr. Levine should be congratulated, working with Mr. Rianmeister and the principals, we've opened the student portal, currently middle school and high school, so that students 7-12 actually have similar access to their parents' due to real-time information. We're hopefully going to be working by the end of the year to do core selection and the rest through real-time to kind of make things easier on this to be, so she can see the family. Last thing I'd like to point out, on the website, I don't know if we're looking, I haven't checked stats yet, but I did say at the beginning I would run my own classroom on the website, and I have been. I want to point out again, I've been using the website for weekly, if you will, informational blasts on what we're doing. I started with this whole issue of grading, which really leads us to assessment and back to instruction, so week by week, whereas I'm able to get new posts up, trying to institute or promote a conversation with the community using the website. I tweet about them every time they go up, just so you don't have to go looking every time. If you're following us on Twitter, you'll know when the information's up there, but what we're trying to do is talk about what's relevant to the district and have conversations so everyone feels not only involved, but informed. As far as, I want to make a quick legal update to the board. Working with Schenk Price, Schenk Price, I apologize, they've turned over the review of our construction matters to a different partner, Gary Werner. He's been reviewing the material. Right-up should be coming my way by the middle of next week, and I'm hoping that he'll be able to make a presentation to the board at our December meeting. The other piece, I do have a lengthy update from Mr. Cosma, most of which we'll find straight into brief, but again, pieces of this will overlap with the Schenk Price update, and so I want to make sure we hold off until you get all the information. But as a matter of fact, I just wanted to touch base that we are moving both of those ends forward. I hope that the board is finding the information we're providing in the brief as far as our legal piece informative, because we're trying to make sure we examine how to move forward so we're prepared for the decisions that have to be made come the spring. I did want to take, was asked to mention again, that the town's tree lighting takes place, parks and buildings in the Oval, is December 2nd, so this is the last board we will have before that, and encourage people to come out, and so when I know Mr. Candor has students here, our music department as well, and so it's a great time to see the kids and just enjoy it in the season in the town. Last year was my first experience, and it's nice to have the community, as I've always been saying, that is this close knit, and so just a reminder, December 2nd. Last thing I want to talk about with the board, I was part of initiative moving forward through the Princeton Center for Leadership Training. It started kicked off this morning, supposed to kick off prior to this storm, but with this storm, everything got pushed back. It's called Campaign Connect, and what they're trying to do is devise an evaluation system for districts and for schools, much akin to what was Blue Ribbon, what they're doing for the state of New Jersey. We were invited to participate, so represented there, there were probably about 25 educators from, 25 representatives from school districts, public, private, there were nonprofits, there were parenting and student organizations, Barry Oertzen from the state DOE was there, and it was all run by Princeton Center. So if it really is an interesting experiment, if you will, that we're going to be able to bring through this, a number of our teachers and administrators into a group where we're combining and see what else is going on around the state, where we can share where we can learn, what we can share, when we can share our learn, so that's exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Lozner. I'd like to thank you and your associates for job well done during a very difficult time with the storm, kicking this on track and getting us organized and having extra days so that students can analyze the high molten question. Secretary's report.
I do not have any further updates.
Senior report, Mrs. Adalhadi.
Good evening. My name is Shreena Adalhadi, and I am the Junior Class Student Council Representative. Over the past three months, Nutley High School has been very busy, many different events and activities. Recently, all the Nutley High School sports teams finished their seasons. There was a fall sports pep rally on October 12 to honor all the Nutley fall sports teams. The Nutley football team finished their season with a record of 3-7. Throughout this season, the team worked extremely hard while also adapting to the new head coach, Coach Sacko. The boys soccer team finished their season with a record of 12 wins, four losses, and five ties. They had a very successful season this year, and they are also the SEC champions of their division. The girls soccer team finished their season with a record of 14-7. The team was also under a new coach, Zach, Coach Mike DiBiennio, and Mrs. and Coach Olivia Juliana. The girls volleyball team finished their season with a record of 17-5, and the girls tennis team had a record of 3-3. They worked hard all season, and many personal achievements were reached. Lastly, the cross-country team had a record of 6-3 for the girls team and 5-7 for the boys team. They also had many personal achievements reached as well. Music program has also been doing very well this year. At a recent competition, they received fifth place out of the 20 teams that were there. Many clubs in Nutley High School have been very productive as well. Student Council hosted their annual homecoming on October 13. Facilities included pre-grain barbecue, the spirit week and banner contest, and the homecoming parade, which the past 1962 was honored in. Also, Student Council held their patterned football game yesterday at the Oval. The score was juniors 26 and seniors 14. This is one of our big fundraisers of the year, as we raise money from snack sales and 30 tickets. Student Council will also be starting their yearly cookie dough sale starting tomorrow. Human Relations Club, Key Club, Student Council, and other organizations helped fundraisers for the victims of hurricane Sandy. Many of the fundraisers include a cooling drive hosted by Student Council, big sales which were held by various clubs, and other sorts of fundraisers were also held as well. Student Council's annual winter draft party, which is to be held on December 7, will also be helping out victims of hurricane Sandy by Don Edelweiss, the towns down the shore which others are really affected by the hurricane. The SAG club is hosting their annual battle demands competition tomorrow night. The MAP trial team run by Mr. Williams is planning to attend a competition at the Essex County Forehouse in January. Also, many of the clubs and student groups in Nutley High School are planning to partake in Nutley tree lighting festivities as well. In academic news, the first marking period ended on Monday, November 12. On October 4, the high school also hosted their annual college fair. Also, next Thursday, the guidance department will be hosting their instant decision day for seniors. Overall, it has been exciting the past three months, filled with many activities and achievements fulfilled by the students and faculty in Nutley High School. We are all eager for all the upcoming events which are planned to occur throughout the rest of the school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay for the home meetings, but we have school tomorrow, and feel free to leave.
Yes.
We have three presentations. First one, by the Scarpelli Civic Association, Dr. Stan Weller.
Thank you, Mr. Capello, members of the board, has been. For the audience, Scarpelli Civic Association is an organization that was started by my grandfather in 1975 and continued by my father, and upon Mrs. Soler's recommendation, we reorganized the Scarpelli Civic Association, but we wanted to concentrate on the autistic program in Nutley, and we've been raising money through bowling, and we also had a walk in the fall, which was very successful. We have some presentations to make tonight. This is just a token of what they are, but we are going to be donating eight iPads and eight iTouches, along with an Atlas series, a CD player, a reading program, a key port and docking port, some science materials, a SUDS car wash, which I understand is for sensation stimulation, a SmartTech software, a wall air conditioner, some kitchen appliances, and we also have provided, over the last two years, four scholarships to seniors attending post-secondary education from the Special Education Program. Our third goal, besides supporting the autistic program and the scholarships, is to start a varsity sport for the special education students, and we're going to be working to further that goal as we move forward. This year, we'll be donating over $11,000 in material. Combined with last year, which was over $10,000, it'll be over $21,000 worth of material to the autistic program. Special thanks to my committee, some more over here, many of you who participated in our events, we appreciate that. Also, a special thanks to Tom Ajolisa Pucci, who ran a volleyball tournament, and they raised over $1,600. They decided to combine their efforts with the Scarpelli Civic Association, so part of what we're donating tonight is money that they raised with their volleyball tournament. So we appreciate the, we appreciate doing this, and we're giving back to the community, and we're giving to this program that's much needed, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Capelli and your group. It's a program, it's something that's near and dear to me, and it's a very important program, and this would be, it's very useful in that program, a great contribution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very quickly, I apologize, this presentation shouldn't only be merged with the HIV presentation, and of course, we actually did that separately, and a lot of this is repetitious, but we included it both in case anyone goes to the website, we want to make sure that they see both sets of information in both places. Normally, moving from now on, you'll see this information combined with our HIV report. Mr. Capello was here last time, the advocate of HIV specialist, talking about what we've done, just review again, we can respect all these activities, because we don't want to go through any, the idea is that we're trying to be proactive and create a culture where we're working with kids and making them make decisions about themselves and others. We went through the elementary, in the morning announcements, to what they were doing in class, based on the core content standards, the campaign poster, the poster campaign, if you will, working with the town, and trying to make sure we're getting that message out, for making kids active participants and creating that culture where we're making good decisions. Middle school activities, again, all week long, different messages to the students to reinforce what's going on. The kids were, they had a lot of fun with some of the music house plays between classes and more points during, and again, the Be Bully Free last week, conducting E7, eighth grade classified specialists, so we're trying to be proactive, we're not waiting for things to happen. Talk about this, high school activities, again, GSA, as well as a number of other organizations did a variety of things during the week, again, the idea is to empower kids, so we're not talking at them, they're actually taking the situation, they're coming up with creative ways to be proactive. The purpose of this, and this is what normally would be in our current presentation, every year required, we have to keep track of all of these different incidents through what they call electronic box of analyzing, so it's similar evidence. We're required, once a year, to report out on the previous year's numbers, so I've seen years from the previous academic year. We give two years, so you have a means of comparison, and again, a lot of times, obviously, have a dance with a lot of things, spikes or dips, what you want to look at over a trend, are we seeing huge numbers, a continual increase or continual decrease? And again, while our violence numbers went up from 53 to 68, our analyzing numbers went down from 70. Instances of weapons down to 42, and substance abuse down to 96. Overall, though, 70 to 81, we usually range, if you look at the past years, somewhere between 70 and 85, so again, we're writing where we have in the past. We're taking action here to be proactive as well, trying to get information out to students, to parents, about what zero tolerance is, what acceptable behavior is, how to make good decisions, again, not waiting for all of the pieces we talked about before, trying to encourage kids to make good decisions all the time. We have to report out by school, and again, what I will talk about the data here, again, these numbers, is why I try to avoid them, because what we're required to put them this way, otherwise they'd be on my power charts, because I don't think you show anything, presenters. There's no major increase overall, what was going on. And again, you can, this presentation will be on the website for the public, and you can certainly break down the numbers, especially if you see there's really, whether it's a spike in one area, it's a bigger one in another, and working with groups, be attributed to, again, you have to look over multiple years to see if there's a change in trend. Actions taken, these are the actions, again, sometimes no actions taken, depending on what's going on, sometimes out of school district's hands. No expulsions, in-school suspension numbers were down, whereas out-of-school suspensions were up, not significantly, and again, as far as administrative law judges, not necessary, and the overall detention, obviously that number does not reflect well the number of detentions that were given to the high school. These are detentions that were given in the result of something that falls under those categories, so there may be other detentions given for issues during class that did not fall under the sets of report headers. Actions by school, again, numbers, reports, report, and say again, for the purposes of this presentation, no major spikes, no major dips, we're pretty much following the usual trend. Every year, we're required to report out on the number of vandalism incidents that actually cost the district money, and again, for last year to this year, it really is a misleading fact, because those two can have been a lot more expensive than four from the previous year, and we give both numbers required to present. Victim summaries, if there was a victim, a lot of times, there may not have been, they give incident, or there may have been more than one. General ed students, as you can see, there was increase there, which is interesting, so many things we're looking at. Mr. Capello, it was our first year pushing proactively on our HIV, and then we start to look at these numbers. One of the things we do with this report is we sit down as a staff, and we do go over the data, try to figure out exactly what this is, and then we report back from special facilities, certain buildings spiked unusually in one direction or another, what was the cause? If it went too high, well, what was the cause? If it actually decreased, well, what did you do? And can we replicate that in other buildings? So again, the different groups are required to report out, general ed students, students with disabilities, students from other schools, non-students, could be an adult, could be a pastor by, could be a community member, school personnel, as you see, there were two previous year and none this year, and then any other, they have exclusive people that fall into other, basically, that's other categories, I didn't provide over just. Defender summary, same categories, we're just trying to see it, again, as you can see the general student numbers, something in concern, we start with building by building. There are two buildings in particular that we want to address, and see what's going on, if something's changed, it's just an odd boy year, and make sure we're being proactive and we're trying to create a safe, bound for kids to learn. Again, our in-district activities, recognize, school violence and analyzing, parent advocacy and advocacy network gave us that donation, we're working to set up a time for practice and auto-teacher training, a number of our elementary school teachers before we can show we implement, but we are, because based on their money, right? Anyone want to use a song? Sorry.
We had a joke cell phone.
I didn't use it. Just trying. Read our own policies. The big piece I want to point out, is one of the things we're doing, we're trying to do, I know some of my administrators see it, but I'm a big fan of both, like, putting people in as close to a real-life situation as possible, having them live through it, and then, most importantly, be brief. We're trying to get people to talk about these situations, so when they come up against one of them, they're prepared to make that choice if they would have been without. Middle school, again, the posters we talked about, making kids creative and trying to get it out into the public, working with our local organization and community, try and make sure that our kids are aware of these issues. We definitely, through the health classes, the presentations by the SAT, talk about issues like tobacco prevention, alcohol, whereas teen drug use in certain buildings. So we'll read to the curriculum, and we're going above and beyond, read on drugs, trying to get the kids aware of these things, trying to do something that excites them, that they will attach with this, so it's not something that they live one day and then say, well, that was nice, and attach it. It becomes something that's interwoven with the school all year long. At the high school, again, a number of things going on, Rachel's challenges have been pushed this year, but again, they're all surround, our oral focus on putting the kids in situations that they can talk about safely afterward. We have big pushes in classrooms with cyberbullying and how to be safe on the internet. It's one of the things we're trying to delete all the time and make students aware, something I didn't talk about at my report, but using Twitter as a superintendent. We try technology in even classrooms, to see if you have these unexpected consequences or teachable moments, if you will. My followers on Twitter spiked about 200 in one night, and it was the night that we had the college laid over, and all 200 for the most part were students, but then used Twitter to lobby me to close school. I have to tell you. So I have to be very careful. Did we break this?
It's one of those teachable moments where everyone can silence.
Silence your phones. But I have to tell you, I was very excited, one of the reasons I'm trying to use the website as a classroom, because kids aren't here, and so if they're following, they're looking, a couple of them tried to make good arguments, 160 characters, it's a challenge. I had to make sure that I was clear on two very key points. One was, wait until 5 o'clock in the morning, which is when we announce on the website, we would tell you, so please don't, and I have to be careful that we're not distributing the wrong information, we have to be responsible, and I was worried about that all my life. The other instance is, at one point, it got so much, I literally had to sign off, so that they knew that they could send me all they want, I wasn't going to get it till after 5 o'clock. But again, the case in point, the kids are using these technologies, we have the leverage in these tools, both for the students and for community members. I'm leveraging the classroom, as I said, you go on the superintendent, go on the main website, click on superintendent, go on the superintendent's classroom, which is on the right-hand side, and you'll see any of the recent posts, and I'm trying to chunk them into small bits, one at a time, so we have a step-by-step conversation about things that are important. Again, coming back to the presentation, the idea of cyberbullying and the rest gets important, something the kids are surrounding, and it's not just high school students or middle school students, but elementary kids that have access as well, allowing them to walk around with smartphones, so it's something that we're taking and training seriously. Just to point out again, that we did shift our HIB, just to reiterate what Mr. Capello said, we do have a district coordinator, but we have specialists in every building. We try to ensure that those specialists were not teachers, they weren't being pulled out of class, which was a huge issue for this year. In instances where happily, we need a HIB specialist, and then pull him or her out of class. Hopefully, that will be avoided, on top of which, now we have people who are trained as counselors, acting in this role, trying to make sure we're best prepared to serve any of the kids. Again, proactivity, you see a list here, there are a number of things going on, and we integrate ourselves again with the town. Mr. Capello and his facility constantly out and trying to interconnect what we're doing with the resources of the town, to make sure that we're working on the same thing, we're not, you know, when duplicating and wasting resources, and again, the biggest factor is we're about return on investment. Proactive, again, we're not just reaching out to the commissioners, who have been a big help, but also any of the local organizations, clergy, different departments, Hope and Champ are two large organizations that actually started in the high school and then kind of branched out to the town, so they're still alive and well, but we work constantly, not dependent on the Service Bureau, N Penn, and Garden City Equality, who was actually at the meeting even today, they actually spoke about Nutley in our response to incident since last year, and how we're proactive about that, and how our high school staff came together, so it was nice to see that they're still pushing us as a model, and those are facts. So that's our final statement.
Thank you. Mr. Lozner?
Good evening. Tonight, we are going to present, myself and the coordinators and the high school administrators, the high school program of studies for the 13-14 school year. As you'll remember, about January of this past year, we were here presenting the program of studies. Last year, we took a couple months at the beginning of the school year to develop a document that we had never had before in Nutley. Throughout the remainder of last year, over the summer, as we've been talking with the administrators, we've been continually talking about how we can make the document better, even though we were just implementing for September of this year, we did have additional ideas and things that we wanted to include as we move forward. ideas and things that we wanted to include as we move forward. The presentation you're going to see tonight is only highlighting the changes to the document, so anything that's not here should have stayed the same, and each of the coordinators will also document the changes that were specifically within their departments. Tonight, the main areas that we're going to discuss are scheduling parameters, changes to the National Honor Society, assessments, cut procedures, and then again, as I said, each of the departments. We're hoping by presenting the program of studies, people understand why we need to have this document, but also how this document helps students, staff, parents, and community members understand what our course offerings are and what our academic procedures are. First, I'd like to introduce Mrs. DiVillo, our director of guidance, to talk about scheduling parameters.
Throughout the summer, we lived the program of studies at the high school. It started in August when we had new enrollments, and it hit us very hard in September, when the students came back to school. And with that, we saw a lot of changes that needed to be just slightly tweaked, because we had a really good foundation. The first change came with some of the forms that we had of the program studies in our appendix, and two of those were the course change form and a level change form. It used to be one document, we've separated it into two separate documents, which have more distinct purposes. The level changes are for students and parents that feel that their placement was not appropriate or is not appropriate, and they have the ability to sign off that they're overriding the recommendations of the teacher, of the department coordinator, and of the high school staff. And that puts the onus on them to make sure that if they are going below or above their level, that they are doing what they need to be successful in that course. Course changes, we found that in September, there's a lot of immediate changes that the students want. They change their mind, their peers in a course that they think might be interesting, and we have to balance the availability with the change that needs to be made first. So what we found was that all of these, I want to change my mind type changes, we need to hold them off a little bit, because things happen over the summer. A student decides that they were misplaced, they realize they were supposed to be in honors, and, you know, a typinger, they weren't placed in honors, or vice versa. So we need to allow time for the students to, if they do find an error, to fix those errors first. And also, as we have the influx of students that come in from other districts, we need to make sure that those students are meeting the graduation requirements in order to get out of high school on time. So those priorities have to be met first. So with the change, course changes, one of the things that we've done is we're holding it off, we change the parameter and the dates on them. So we've standardized the dates, instead of picking a date like September thirteenth or September twenty-seventh, we've said the last day of first walking period, or the first, the beginning of the third week of school. So we don't have to tweak the dates every year, so they're more standard. When it comes to the course changes, we're holding students off for ten school days, because we want to allow for those errors to be fixed, because they have a priority, and for any new entrance to come in and enroll in the courses that they need. Once those ten days are up, and the drop, the traditional type of drop adds can start, we will keep track of the students as they come in, and the order that they came in, and the order that they are addressed, and it is stated in the program studies very clearly this time around, that in order for a change to be made, a seat in that course has to be opened, and all the other courses that would be affected by that change. Sometimes going from sociology to archaeology isn't as easy as dropping one and adding another. You may have to move your math, move your English, and move your gym, and if you can move your math, but you can't move the English and the gym, unfortunately, we can't do that type of schedule change, because we don't want to over-enroll another course. We also made some changes to the withdrawal. Currently, we are using a WP and a WF, if a student chooses to withdraw from a course after a certain time, permanent, their permanent record on the transcript, there's an RWP or WF at the time of the withdrawal. But what we did not put in the program studies last year was, when students are withdrawn, when students cut, or they have excessive absences, they are removed administratively from a class, and that's different than a WP and a WF, because they're not choosing to come out of the course. So that is an addition. And then finally, with lunch, just like we tell students that, or we remind students that they should pick courses and not teachers and periods, we have a similar reminder when it comes to lunch, that they should be taking lunch, it's healthy to eat lunch, and if they do choose to override the recommendation of eating lunch during the school day, that there are certain parameters they have to work within. Obviously, you can't eat during a gym, can't eat during a music class, or when you're trying to sing or play an instrument, it's not appropriate to eat during a science class because of the labs, and if they are dropping lunch to pick up an extra course, that they need to make arrangements where they're not going to the cafeteria and taking time away from learning, because that has been a problem this year, going to cafeteria, trying to buy lunch, standing in line, and then missing twenty minutes of instruction. That does not help the students. And making arrangements that if they are going to eat during the school day in appropriate classes, that they are bringing lunch of their own, and being peanut-free, allergy-free as much as they can, and being safe from their peers. Slight changes to National Honor Society, they were, the major changes were made last year with the adjustment of our grade scale. The GPAs remain the same. The major change is when the second induction is for students. In the past, we've always had the spring induction for juniors, and then for any juniors that missed it at that time, we always had another induction for them as seniors, but they used to wait until the following spring, and that does not benefit our students. There are many colleges that offer scholarships just for being in the National Honor Society. I have a student that, was a student of mine in fifth grade, but also went through the high school program, and she is at Washington College in Maryland, and she has been awarded twelve thousand dollars a year just for being in the National Honor Society. So a student that misses it in their junior year, has to wait to spring their senior year, would miss out on that opportunity. So by having a fall induction, which our new honor site co-advisors have instituted this year, it allows those seniors to have that on their resume, so to speak, on their college applications, so when they go out in the fall, they're eligible for all these scholarships. So that's the major change. With that, the juniors, the requirements are staying the same, six school service activities, twenty-four hours of community service, not done in conjunction with any of those school service activities, and obviously having the good character and the recommendations of the staff. For the seniors, GPA is the same, the three-point-seven, school service stays the same, because between spring of junior year and fall of senior year, you're really not getting a full year to join another club. So that was unfair to the students, but over the summer, between spring of junior year and fall of senior year, eight hours of additional community service, we felt was fair to do over a four-to-five-month timeframe. So that is the major change for the National Society. Our society, we're hoping that this helps our seniors as they apply to politics in the fall. Midterms and final exams, we've always had final exams in Nutley. One thing that we have not had is midterms, and we are instituting that this year, and because of that change, we now have to adjust our calculations for our final averages. In the past, each marking period was doubled, and the final exam was added in, and you're divided by nine. With the addition of the midterms, the midterm is counting as one tenth, the final exam is counting as one tenth, and each marking period is doubled. There is one exception to that. When it comes to the AP exam, students that choose to sit for the AP exam through College Board would be exempt from taking the Nutley High School final exam. So if you're enrolled and hold an AP statistics, you can choose not to sit for the exam, and you would take the Nutley High School exam. Or if you could choose to take the AP exam, and you would be exempt from the Nutley High School final exam. In that scenario, the students' final average would revert back to our old system with nines, but that extra ninth would be the midterm exam as opposed to the final exam. So it's a similar calculation. Finally, cut procedures. That W came into play with cut procedures, that was one change that affected this procedure. The other procedure was when students cut, whether they take an extra lunch period or don't show up for a class, we had certain thresholds where they would lose credit and be withdrawn administratively through our vice-principal offices. For a full-year course, that threshold is four, and we needed to make adjustments, so happier courses, semester courses, one-day-a-week courses weren't held to the same standard of four days. Four days out of a one-day-a-week course is really quite a bit. So we made those adjustments. For a three-day-a-week course, that matches the semester course threshold, which is three cuts before withdrawal, and the one-day-a-week course, we have a science course that needs one day a week, it's a course that is taken in conjunction with human physiology honors, human physiology honors, that type of course is two, isn't it? So once that second cut is missed, they're losing credit and would be withdrawn from the class. I think those are the first two questions.
Over the past two months, all the coordinators have worked collaboratively with Mrs. DiVillo and I, as well as the high school administrators, to update the program study, not only working within their departments, but also working on these main direction changes that Mrs. DiVillo just spoke of. While they were doing that, they were also meeting with their teachers and talking about different things in their department that they either wanted to update, modify, or change for the upcoming school year. In each of the departments, we had changes, some were as minor as just tweaking to course descriptions, while others had the addition or deletion of courses. This evening, you're going to hear from the coordinator, who had more than just description changes to their course offerings, and we're going to begin with Ms. McFerrin.
Good evening. We just have one new course that we're offering. Let me preface it a little bit, say, we have a cyber safety club right now, it's Drissa Rubash runs the club, meets once, twice a month. They create scenarios regarding cyber safety, they make these presentations to the elementary school students, in fact, I think we're going to Lincoln tomorrow afternoon. It's been a success, and we're taking it to the next level. Digital citizenship, cyber safety will center around service learning and mentoring, where the students will share their knowledge and experiences with the elementary and middle school students, as well as with parents and members of the community. And therefore, promote peer tolerance and safe and responsible use of technology, and the students will join forces with classes and clubs at the high school also. The course will focus on internet-fused topics such as online matters and ethics, online safety and relationships, online security, digital life, privacy and digital footprints, self-expression and identity, and the connected culture. The prime objective of this course will be for the students to assess curriculum materials from resources provided by organizations such as iSafe America, Cybersmart.org, and a number of others, and then construct lessons that will engage younger students throughout the school community. Although the proper integration of technology has shown to enhance student achievement, the proper use of technology, the improper use of technology leads to serious problems including cyberbullying, sexting, plagiarism, piracy, hacking, and visiting inappropriate websites. Therefore, proactive approach is needed to combat abusive online behavior. We feel that digital citizenship education and peer mentoring will help our children develop into respectful and responsible global citizens. We also have eliminated our honors level at the Cisco, our Cisco courses. We felt that even though this was a very intense course, it does lead to a possible Cisco certification, and therefore, we felt that was a better way to go. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. DeMornis from the English Department.
This year, we are eliminating the honors level course in English IV. Just as a matter of reference, we eliminated the English III honors course this year for the twelve-thirteen school year. This is for next year, we are also eliminating that. The reasoning behind that is we offer English AP III, we also offer humanities, English IV AP. So with the competing course, we decided that English IV and English III would not be needed. The school news one and two were always offered as honors courses. The school news one, two, and three are really the students that work on the school newspaper, the maroon and gray. We always offered school news one and two as honors level courses. At this time, we feel that school news three should be the honors level course, after students have proven that they truly are interested, good writers, and are dedicated to the maroon and gray of the school newspaper, they will then receive credit for honors level at school news three. But school news one and two will be regular classes.
Students in school news three also have the added responsibility of mentoring some of the younger students that are coming in, so we felt that that was also something that needed for our higher level. Ms. DeMornis and Ms. Martin, to talk about the SAT prep course offering, can I hear?
I think we're doing it together.
Basically, this is staying the same, except we're offering it to more students. So we're going to run it three times instead of two. So instead of just running it September, October for the November test, we're going to run it September for the October test, October for the November test.
September for the October test, September for the November test. Is that the same time?
Basically, we have, right now, we have two six-week courses.
It's very confused, isn't it?
We have two six-week courses right now, and we're finding and we're pushing more, it's beneficial for students to take the October SAT test, because if the October scores in early, they have a better opportunity of applying early action, early decision. And what happened this year is we had a bunch of seniors sign up for the course that runs leading up to the November test, and after three weeks, they're like, all right, I took my October test, I'm done, and, well, you sign up for a six-week course, you need to stay in the six-week course. So what we're doing is we're taking those six weeks, six in the fall, six in the spring, and we're dividing it up into three times four. So in the fall, we will have a four-week course that begins in September, which anyone that wants to take the October test or the November test can take. It will lead up to the October test, though, but those extra four weeks, hopefully it'll stay with them. And then in the spring, we also host the March SAT and the June SAT in Nutley High School. So those are two opportunities for juniors to take it for the first time or the first and the second time.
So how many sections, how many times are we talking?
Three times.
Right, four weeks before the, in the fall, four weeks before the March test, and four weeks before the June test. So it's still two weeks of courses, it's just three times four instead of two times six.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. DiVillo.
Thank you, Jill.
Does it take Ms. Martin?
Okay. Two new courses that you haven't seen are Algebra, is Algebra II Fundamentals and called Algebra Which I Will Explain, when I show you the chart. Okay. Okay. So basically, what change, let's see. The first change is a couple names. Accelerated precalculus honors, didn't I have, do you have my other? I had formerly advanced math honors. Didn't come up. Okay. So accelerated precalculus honors is the same course as the current advanced math honors. Why was that changed? Basically, before I talk about the changes, all of these changes came from feedback from students, teachers, parents, and guidance counselors. So there are reasons behind every change. Accelerated precalculus honors is called advanced math honors now, and what's happening is students don't understand the different names, so I tried to change the names to exactly what, you know, what course it's covering. Let's see, other names, the other, only other change, okay. Advanced algebra with trigonometry, this is called now math analysis. Basically, guidance counselors and parents and students, what is math analysis? It's an extension of advanced algebra II into trigonometry, which they will need for precalculus and calculus. And it gets into precalculus, just not as much as a precalculus course. It depends on the students, it depends on the group that they have, how far they can get into the precal. College algebra, formerly Selected Topics in Math. Basically, we had a course, it was called Selected Topics, we have it currently now, and they would, you know, do some review for mathematics that they're going to see in college, college placement tests, SAT prep, ACT prep. And what the teachers are finding is that the students need more work with the algebra than any other topic. They used to go into statistics more, and like finance, stocks, bonds, all that. They said they need more work in the college algebra, because we have students going to college, and they're failing their placement tests, which worries us. So for now, I feel like based on the needs of our students currently, we need a college algebra course to get them ready. In the future, I plan on, I hope to, we have AP statistics, which isn't on here, because it's a, like, they usually take it in addition to something, as an elective. I hope to, you know- I hope to, you know, as our students improve, have a statistics course for all seniors. But I just want to, you know, I'm dealing with these students that we currently have. Hopefully, with some changes in our curriculum from the bottom up, we'll have more choices. Algebra II Fundamentals. Basically, what we're finding is that every student wants to take Algebra II, because it is a requirement for a four-year college. Now, there are students who want to take Algebra II that may get into trigonometry and precalculus in college. And then, there are students who are taking the Algebra II to be, you know, eligible for a four-year college to finish their high school graduation requirements and aren't going to pursue advanced-level math courses. So, I feel that sometimes the Algebra II students are held back by students that are really struggling to finish that requirement. And I will offer inclusion for Algebra II fundamentals also. And that's been requested a lot, too. We have, so I'm going to need, you know, more sections of that. Other changes. This is just a guide of how a student could progress through the courses. Nothing is set in stone. They can move up and down based on common assessment results, teacher recommendation, the needs of the student. A lot of it's based on what they plan to study in college. I mean, basically, you just have to talk to the student and see, you know, where they want to be. That's it.
Can you just talk about the three rows across and how it's?
The three rows across. Basically, if you start. Right. You didn't want to like set it in stone, because sometimes a sophomore will end up in precalculus. So, it's not really great order all the time. Okay. So, if a student starts out in Algebra 1 as a seventh grader, that's the first row. Okay, they're going to take Algebra 1 in seventh grade. That's our most accelerated group. Then, they're into Geometry, Algebra II, Precalculus. They're into AB Cal as a junior. Now, right now, we have the Algebra readiness assessment in sixth grade, which tells us whether they're ready for algebra. Now, if they're not ready for algebra, but they're still pretty advanced, that's where Foundations of Algebra is, and then, those are your eighth-grade Algebra 1 students. And then, they're also, you know, eligible for the honors track. But if you have an accelerated Algebra 1 student in eighth grade who needs Algebra 1 again, they can take it again in ninth grade, Advanced Algebra 1. Sure.
What's the difference in content between Algebra accelerated, Algebra 1, honors Algebra 1, and Algebra 1?
You mean accelerated, advanced, and Algebra 1? Accelerated Algebra 1 is really intense and fast, like one day.
So, did they go for a full year and then?
Yes.
Then, why would we have them? Why would it be happier then if something for the kids that are accelerated are getting through the test? Like, do the kids that are regular Algebra 1 not finish all the material that kids in accelerated Algebra 1 finish?
They finish the Algebra 1 requirements. Accelerated Algebra 1 will go further and deeper. Like, you have, there's a difference between a graduation requirement and someone who's going to go into advanced math classes.
But they're going to end up just in AP Calculus. So, a kid who's in regular Algebra 1 for some reason as a freshman might never make it to calculus.
They can make it to calculus in college.
Regular Algebra 1 in freshman year? They can make it to calculus if they double up.
I mean, I blew it off, I am still like taking it, but I could have taken it, I should have. A freshman?
Right.
A student that's in Algebra 1 freshman year, if they double up.
It's not going to make it to calculus in high school.
See, I think that's a problem.
It is a problem.
They need to be introduced to it.
They can do, Lee, they can do it if they double up.
Yeah, they double up.
Not only can they double up, but with the option two.
An option two.
Students can certainly take control of their own academic progress. It's not that we're not, this is a sequence, it's not a track. So, students can go back and forth depending on how they're learning that. As Martin said, any given core class, like your typical Algebra 1, they are covering what is expected of a student when it comes to Algebra 1. But again, not only does accelerated Algebra 1 mean that they're getting it earlier, because they're getting it earlier in the sequence, but they are going faster. So, not only are they covering the core, they're covering beyond that. And there is a discrepancy, but one of the pieces, this is another step based on, Ms. Martin talked about how we had to start from the bottom up. We're rationing things up. I hope you can see that we're changing the sequence and making it more rigorous now. But part of it is this is going to continue to change as we get different students into seventh grade, being exposed to a different case-based math curriculum, with different resources, the common core courses, algebra, thinking, all the way down to kindergarten. We have, we have it embedded to that level in our K 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 curriculum. By having that, it allows us to step up. I'd love to see, like we talked about the AP staff class, becoming more of a core is not something that people take on top of. Not overlapping Calc AB and Calc BC. If your student's where it's supposed to be, they go directly to BC. And then, they have, they're freed up for other advanced placement courses and math courses as well. And making sure that we have more than one, so we constantly have more movement upwards and downwards.
I mean, this is for now. I hope in the future to get more students, almost everyone, in advanced algebra trade, because that's a student who's ready for precal and/or calc as a freshman in college.
Because now, college is required, there's a higher math.
It requires calculus. Not every major will require calculus. Depends on their major. They all require a math requirement. So, college algebra is to prepare that student to satisfy that math requirement, because they're having trouble doing math. A lot of colleges will require a math requirement such as logic and statistics. Not all majors will require calculus. A math, science, and business major will, definitely. Yeah, but.
But like liberal arts and general liberal arts.
They have a choice most of the time.
But they still have to, I'm imagining it's more difficult as years go on, and they have to be exposed to in high school to perform well in college.
No, you're right. But we have to, in order for me to expect more from them, we have to start from the bottom up. I don't have those students right now. I hope to.
And so, we're increasing, we're getting individual classes. We've increased the actual structure that's there, but we're not taking like leaps at this point, because we have to build as the students progress. I mean, calculus used to be, correct me if I'm wrong, but it used to be the standard, as it was for a long time. Now, there's a huge argument over whether statistics should be the standard. And again, calculus itself is not a requirement. You don't require calculus unless you're going into specific areas. And so, one of the things we talked to Mrs. Davilio about, we have to get students and parents thinking about college and kindergarten, unfortunately. So that they see, I don't want a kid to get to seventh grade and realize, oh my gosh, I'm already behind the eighth. Even if they are, we have instructors in place, and the new program studies this year, not the one that's actually going to be put in place this year, with options to, and the rest of them catching up on code. Students have an option. They may find themselves later in life, like, God, I'm really good at math. It's not that they're stuck in one university.
Yeah, the jobs that are going to exist.
And some of them, like.
We can also use, again, I have a perfect example this year. I have a sophomore this year, one of my students, that's in calculus. Because of option two, we couldn't get Advanced Math honors to work. He took Advanced Math honors, which is based in precalculus, over the summer through Johns Hopkins. So, just because there's a suggested sequence doesn't mean you're locked into anything. There was a lot of movement. This student will probably be in AP Calculus next year as a junior.
I mean, this is what we need for next year. I hope that the bottom kind of trickles down. We have more students taking calculus. By the way, calculus will not be calculus honors. It's either calculus, just like the English, or AP Cal. If you want honors credit, you need to be in AP. I teach one section of both, and it is different. So, I feel like in order to get that, the AP, they need to be in that class. But they can still get project acceleration points with just calculus from City Hall and other schools. There's so many on that list now. Do you have any more questions?
I think this is something important for parents, to be explained to parents.
It is.
Over and over and, I mean, it can't be just like, you know, first, we have that open house, you explain it once, and then think it's going to, I mean, it has to be.
It's part of a larger discussion when it comes to college board and AP and the importance of students taking AP exams, because it's a bigger picture.
You have to remember, see the Algebra 1 and the Algebra 1 Part 1? That didn't always exist, because not everyone was required to take algebra in high school. You had a population that did not have to take it. This is a new graduation requirement, Algebra 1, geometry, and a course that builds. So, that didn't exist when we went to school. So, that is why your Algebra 1 would probably be categorized as Advanced Algebra 1, which is a problem. We need to get everyone in an advanced, we need to get more of our population in the middle and above, and so that we have less choices below, because we don't need them.
Yes, yes, don't worry about it. The teachers are required to teach this amount of courses.
That's right.
All the teachers, I need you to teach all these courses.
I didn't add any sections. I mean, it's the same number.
And you're servicing, exactly. You're servicing the same number of students. It's a matter of creating the kids where they are. And part of this, to Ms. Martin's credit, again, we're not jumping right to whatever it is we want to end with. We have to meet the kids where they are. So, we are accelerating both at the high school, but we're also changing what we do prior to that. And part of it, as Mrs. Davilio alluded to, we want to leverage things such as novies and a regular annual schedule of parent meetings, of how we inform people so they're thinking about these things before. And it's never too late, which is part of what this is showing. But we want to make sure we're thinking about them all the time, right from the get-go.
And also, if there's anything, you know, like the summer programs, those are good options, too.
But not for every student. Like, they are great options, though. And you have to be careful, though, with it, too. Right. That's it.
It was a learning year or something.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
There were some successes, and then, there were some that didn't go as well. But it was a learning year. And that's where the option two and understanding the programs where the students are taking these classes and how they tie into our curriculum is really important.
But we also have AP Statistics to do with. Notion, I don't know where that went on my chart.
Next, we have Mr. Maturia to discuss World Languages.
Good evening. The only major change that we're making in the World Language program offerings will be the removal of the Level 2 honors distinction for all languages. As we're reviewing our program in World Languages and as we look at the current offerings, we have to ask ourselves the question, what drives World Language instruction? And actually, what creates learning environment that we expose our students to? The honors distinction for Level 2 does not match the proficiency levels that are prescribed for Level 2 courses. In the World Language Department currently, in other typical districts, when there are two courses of the same level, one with a DH, the station, and one without, usually, the only difference is the speed at which the material is presented. We want to move away, in Nutley, Nutley's World Language Department, we want to move away from the idea that the speed at which the material is presented predicts rigor. We want to talk about, what's going to drive rigor will be the actual learning experiences. Currently, the way World Languages are offered and the way the efficiency guidelines are presented range from novice to advanced. And those three levels are further subdivided into low, mid, and high. And then, there are the two higher levels, which are superior and distinguished. A Level 2 course, based on our current student body, students that take Level 2 are between the novice high and intermediate low. Those words right there do not match, you know, the honors distinction, which we call for rigor. We want to make sure that the rigor that we're providing in those courses matches the can-do descriptors in that proficiency level. And we want to create an environment where varying students can work together in the classroom and meeting the same community of objectives, which is something that takes place in the first form of communication.
So, are we still going to have honors or compete language courses?
Oh, absolutely. What we want to make sure is, right now, our students are exposed to, fifth and sixth grade, they're exposed to one language once a week. Then, when they get to the middle school, they're exposed to two languages, either Spanish or Italian, but it's not every student. The amount of language that they're exposed to is actually of a one-year course over the course of two years. So, by the time they get to the high school, students that are taking a Level 2 course have really only been exposed to about two years of a language. Students that are taking honors courses in other subject areas have been exposed to those subject areas since they started in school. So, they don't have the necessary skill sets to engage in rigorous activities. And what we want to do is we want to create an environment where all of our students are going to be exposed to the same learning environment. And then, as the four-year plan or the five-year plan that will be in place with all the changes that we're going to make, Level 2 will no longer be offered at the high school. And all students that will be taking languages will be in Level 3 and Level 4, which will automatically be considered honor based on what the students are doing with the language.
Okay, so, it's a little bit different then. So, if a person hadn't taken a language, say, in the junior high and middle school, and they take Spanish 1 in the freshman year.
Correct.
Spanish 2 is, there's no honors Spanish 2, it's just Spanish 2.
Correct.
Spanish 3 would be an honors course.
Correct.
And Spanish 4.
And currently, we offer a regular Level 3 and then, an honors Level 3.
Also, both levels at Level 3?
For next year, yes.
Not a two.
No.
Just as we bring this to a close, we hope that by updating the staff and that we can continue to bring consistency to our processes and procedures. We want to communicate information related to our course offerings and academic procedures. And we also want to provide a source of information for students and parents. Just as we did last year at this time, this PowerPoint presentation, as well as the draft, High School Program of Studies will be available on the website beginning tomorrow. If you have questions or comments, or also Program of Studies at nutleyschools.org, you can send them there, and we will be able to address those possibly at the next meeting. And then, from there, this document will be given to the board as a proposal for approval at the summer meeting. I just want to take the opportunity also to thank all the coordinators who are here this, they're all here this evening, the director of guidance and the high school administrators for their work on this project. Again, in a very short period of time, we were able to update a document and get something ready for next school year, so that it provides the students the most opportunity to not only understand what's being offered for the 13, 14 school year, but to provide the chance for them to go through the registration process without rushing it. Which will also make Mrs. Davilio very happy. So, I wanted to thank all of them for their work. Ms. Martin.
I wanted to add a word to Mr. Lahn's statement to show appreciation to the coordinators and everyone else that's going on, to put something like this together here, here, it's a huge undertaking. I want to thank Mr. Lahn as well, for making sure that we can get this done and also in the real sport at the same time. I did want to take this opportunity, we've never done program studies prior since. And I hope it does show, see the questions and conversations we have in the board level and the curriculum, for sure, the academic community, talking about this for now. I've wanted to get to that multiple times. The idea is that for them to learn in district, we have to have procedures and processes in place that happen every single year that promote this. I mean, to some of Mrs. Lahn's questions, the coordinators are thinking three, four years out. This was step two. Last year was just coming out with program studies for the first time that we had these conversations. Again, showing that this becomes a regular thing now. They're already talking about, they're already talking now about what the 14, 15 will look like and how we get there through the 13, 14. And so, that's what this process really is about, is showing that we are constantly raising the bar, appropriately based on where our kids are, where our teachers are, what we can, based on resources. And I'm thinking about multiple pieces. With Mrs. Davilio, not just helping kids future in the guidance department, but the nuts and bolts of building this master schedule that will work, making sure that we're this far ahead helps, so we can start force-acting in time and fashion. And we get kids where they're supposed to be, we can have conversations with the students, conversations with their parents, and everyone feels more involved. This idea that we're going to talk about this every single year. Middle school's coming next, as we've done before. Public presentation was today, the boards had it, and we're not approving it today. We have an email address specifically for this, it's up on the website, and everyone's available, but it's on the contact information. So, it's time for the public to get involved and get to talk about this. Even once this one's finalized, we'll start talking about the next one. We'll approve it at the next meeting, but we'll also present the Middle School Program of Studies, again, based on timeline that's workable for us, but also allows for scheduling the rest to happen for the middle school, which we're going to be here. And again, just pushing this conversation, and you'll see a number of pieces that you see at the end here, being built upon at the middle one, and how we're building that whole program that's really key to us. So, I want to thank everybody here, Mr. Williams, Mr. Francis, and Mr. Shorenson, the coordinators who are here, and Mrs. Lahn for making the cap, as well as the academic committee for pushing through all the documents and all the red.
Thank you. Before we go into community reports, we're accepting one other donation this evening. And it's my pleasure to recognize the donation of two iPads of cases of replacement insurance by Robert and Jill Davilio for this last Latinus class. And we'd like to thank them.
Absolutely. Again, very useful donation. Gladly accepted. Committee reports. Now, we have a number of them, and maybe we'll start with Ms. Martin.
Okay.
And go around the table.
All right, sure.
In regards to strategic planning, the configuration committee called their first meeting on Wednesday, October 24. First-year goal was defined. First-year goal reads, "By June 2013, the configuration committee will look at the demographics of the community, capacity, and the needs of each school building, curriculum planning and scheduling across K through 12 grade levels." Configuration committee will analyze the needs of the district and also look at the successful models and physical and organizational structures of other districts. The aim is to create the best possible environment to reflect the district's values and to achieve its educational goals. The group's findings and recommendations will be presented later this year to the board. During the November, December meetings, the team members will need to go over, to coordinate with the building level groups. The long-term facility planning committee received one submission in answer to the long-range planning study, RRP. We plan to interview the company that submitted the proposal sometime within the next month. The work includes enrollment projections and facility analysis. The study is being conducted to help us plan and budget for any enrollment fluctuations within the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Kuchka. I'll begin with our strategic planning curriculum report. We had our first meeting this past week, actually, it was my first meeting this past week, but you'll see that this presentation dovetails nicely with program of studies presentation, which we just heard. In terms of the committee members, we have a nice cross-section of key stakeholders, representative of the district, administrators, teachers, coordinators, as well as parents. We have two parent members that are part of our committee. I see this, our goal for our work, as an opportunity to create a process that is proactive rather than reactive. I think historically, for the past decade or so, our district has been somewhat reactive in terms of some of our findings with CUSAC. And this is a great opportunity for us to dig deep and to have a heads-up in terms of at least identifying areas of weakness, areas of strength, and capitalizing on those given areas. This is the goal that emanated from our committee work. By June 2013, the strategic planning curriculum group will assemble a team of staff and stakeholders who will define the components of Nutley's curriculum review process. And that's what I'm going to talk about tonight in terms of those core components. Complete an extensive program review. And we're going to pilot that for music in world languages and make recommendations based on these findings to better perform future program reviews. And this work will culminate in a final report to the board this coming June. So, what are those core components? We have curriculum, instruction, assessment and performance, resources and professional development. And the way I actually articulate the next few slides is based on the feedback that I did receive from Mr. Materi and Mr. Dandari in terms of these key and overarching questions in terms of what we want to see happen with our curriculum development process. First and foremost, is our curriculum appropriately aligned to the standards, the common core that we have throughout the state, national, as well as international? Is our curriculum vertically as well as horizontally aligned? Vertically aligned K through 12? Is it being implemented consistently? How comprehensive is our given curriculum throughout the district? Is it appropriately sequenced? Is it accessible to teachers? How is it formatted to assist our teachers? And is it meaningful to the instruction that students receive? And that's going to lead me to the next piece in terms of identifying the core elements of what we want to see happen with instruction in our district. I think, again, ultimately, when we look at this slide, it's not just what we want to teach, but how we go about teaching it and how do we embrace the student-centered approach. So, in essence, is our instructional capabilities aligned with the curriculum? Is it based on both curriculum and current students? And we heard that tonight in terms of the whole algorithm sequence that we're identified as perhaps an area that needs to be strengthened. How well-planned, executed is it? How well-integrated is our curriculum, or at least our instruction, to meet those needs? And are we actually infusing multiple resources? And that's going to dovetail nicely when I talk about professional development. And in essence, is our instruction differentiated consistently to meet the needs of our students in terms of ability, style, as well as interest? Again, this goes back to what Mr. Lazbeck has at least embraced earlier throughout the year. Are we adhering to this common language as well? And what are our students asked to do? In terms of assessment of performance, we invested this past year in Performance Matters, which is a nice tool for our district to essentially capture some much-needed information in terms of how we measure student performance in respect with content areas. And again, are we consistent with following purpose, method, criteria, standards, all this feedback? And ultimately, how will these decisions be based on student performance data? And will that hopefully conform our curriculum revisions, placement, instructional methodology, again, differentiation, as well as professional development opportunities? Of course, resources. Does the district provide adequate resources to teachers to transform curriculum with meaningful instruction? And this is a question that I posed to Mr. Materi in our past academic committee meeting in terms of the need to strengthen our world languages program, but essentially, do we have the resources to meet those given objectives? And where are we lacking as a district? And how do we work with our budget committee to hopefully improve our academic program? And I think that's a real question that we need to ask ourselves as a district. How are these resources being articulated? Are they current? And how does technology play a role in this process? I know that Mr. Levine, at some point, wants to essentially implement a repository of information for the staff in terms of where to access curriculum, resources to help improve, and how we have instructional capabilities. Last but not least, professional development. I think the idea here with this slide is, how are we going to get this ROI, this return on investment? So, if we do make that commitment to our teachers, we want to give them as much professional development as possible. But ultimately, what is the impact of that professional development? But more important is, how does that professional development get translated to improved student performance? And I think that's the overarching question we need to ask ourselves. So, that's my interim report. And just real quickly, in terms of our academic committee that met on the 13th, and I think you heard it tonight, and you're going to have that information provided to you online in terms of our program of studies that was presented to us by Ms. Valange, Mr. Davilio. Mr. Materi was there at that meeting as well. And it was an opportunity to discuss the proposed changes, as well as updates into those given sections. We also met with Mr. Materi, who gave us an overview regarding the world languages program. And I think ultimately, the idea, or at least the hope for our district is, how can we expand the scope and breadth of these program offerings for world languages, considering the lack of resources? Here's a program that has been hit for the past decade in terms of resources, folks not being able to have positions renewed and so forth. So, in essence, it's been a program that's been decimated, and our hope is, how do we begin to breathe new life into that program? We also talked about this upcoming apothecary year, about districts seeking to introduce model classrooms. And we have plans to hire consultants, provide professional development and training to help with that effort. And that's my report.
Thank you. Can you define it? The planning committee met on November 13th. At that meeting, we had a draft, a preliminary draft of the audit was presented by Gary Vincy and his associates. Certain recommendations they made to us and observations and modifying the Peking report that will be presented to the full board next month and voted on. We reviewed the transfer record with Mrs. Williams to get expenditures in line, the correct line items. There was some movement in the salary area, the salary benefits to get them aligned. And that will help us as we develop the budget for next year and get it straightened out and minimize the transfers as we go forward. We also reviewed other agenda items tonight's meeting, including the LightPath contract, which we recommend we include on the board. We got a preliminary report from our business administrator on the early plan, a glimpse at the budget development for 2013, 2014. And as it's more progress, the board will get that information. And finally, we talked about the food service with students' account and the process that's going to be developed as we go forward. How to notify the parents when the account balances are going negative and what we do to students where they have a balance and make sure that they know that.
Strategic Planning Competency Group met October 19th. They crafted their one-year goal I'd like to share with you. By June 2013, the Strategic Planning Competency Group will research the instruction and assessment of competencies that are significant to citizenship, lifelong learning, and the workplace. Make a recommendation for a district framework of these critical competencies and evaluate the use of common assessments to assess mastery of these skills. That's it.
The Community Action Committee had a meeting on November 7th. And we set a couple of goals and some agendas, which I'll review. And I want to first acknowledge to Ms. Davilio for putting the meeting together and also helping take some of the notes separate from myself. So, she's doing a lot of duty here tonight in a lot of different committees. But we came up with first our year-long goal by June 2013. The community committee will review the components of Nutley's current instructional program. The focus on curriculum-based, service-oriented community projects. Review existing models of other school systems and recommendations for the development of a K through 12 program that instills confidence, responsibility in our students, and produces measurable contribution to our community. This work will culminate with a full report and a presentation to the Board of Education. From there, we also did some brainstorming, and we decided the data collection was important. And we are actually, during the meeting, the action team developed potential questions to be used to survey the district's staff through an online survey, Survey Monkey. Ms. Davilio, Linda McDonald, Catherine Mitchell, Amberine Mullane are going to edit the working draft of the survey, which we emailed out to the team members for the finalization. The survey that will then be disseminated through the Nutley Schools email system in November for the purpose of collecting data on current components of our instructional program, which focuses lends itself to service-oriented community projects. We also assigned tasks at the meeting so that we have personnel assigned to check on other districts and what service models they have, as well as checking with the school boards association to see what may exist that they also have from other districts in the state. So, then we discussed our one-year goal. And we discussed the purpose of one-year goal in relation to the five-year strategic plan, community goal, and the connection and possible overlap with the year-one and five-year goal of the character action team. Team members shared community service projects and opportunities also at the same meeting. We also made a decision, it would have to be implemented by grades. And we've chosen, when we do roll out these projects, it will start possibly, I mean, Jill's going to let this go. This is discussed at the meeting, grades three, six, and nine, and roll it out to the further grades in the next coming years. And our next meeting, so that we have time to get the surveys back and data together, will be on December 12th. We also had an education foundation meeting. Some might not be familiar with this, but we have an educational foundation separate from the school system that raises funds, that goes towards the education of our children for needed things above and beyond what we may be able to afford the district, or some of the extra programs or things we may need to add. From that meeting, we've decided that we will be having an educational foundation dinner once a year. But we will be honoring someone in the community for their service to the community, education, volunteerism, and other things they've done and worked on in the community. And we've chosen that date to be March 21st, 2013, at the York Club. Will be that event. I'm the foundation, myself and Mr. Kuchka are now trustees. Mr. Kazinski also attends the meetings. For this foundation dinner, myself and Lorraine Kazinski will be the co-chairs. We'll be working on further details, we'll be all coming out. But if you could mark your calendars now, this is money that we're raising. It's going to go purely to education in the town of Nutley, two programs. If you're just talking about extra needs and things today, this is where hopefully we can find some of those funds. And that'll be March 31st. Thank you, Mr. President. The York Club, it's at the Philly High School, New York City Hall Building. And the York Club is a restaurant up at the top.
And they have LA, they have LA parking, so you don't have to...
Right, they have LA parking.
Right front of the building, they have...
Correct.
It's right down 121, we have the turn. I have no report. Clear, please leave.
Before I begin the administration committee report, Fred, why don't you share the LightPath section of it, and then I'll go to the report.
Sure. Also, at the administrative meeting, LightPath was discussed and was put on the agenda for tonight. I'll make some further comments after, but it is for the benefit of this district, and it is on the agenda. And actually, we'll actually start saving funds for our district the moment we save it. We've not had a contract. I want to thank the superintendent and Ian for putting that together. But it is a great savings to the district and will be better service to the district. So, we recommend that and have it on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, the administration committee met on November 12th. The first item we discussed was security. And I would like to thank Gina right next to me, who's been working extensively on a very large plan for our district. It's well overdue. It covers a variety of topics, including evacuation plans, bomb threats, shelters in place, you name it. Could be more timely after what we experienced with Hurricane Sandy. We're going to have upcoming meetings dealing with training staff and students based on the items that are in this plan. This is a plan that is in progress, and it still has one way to go, but certainly is a valuable start. And I'd like to thank you for your hard work on this. We also would like to, looking forward, incorporate a more comprehensive communication system that will allow us to communicate among the buildings in a situation like a lockdown more effectively than we have been. And perhaps even emergency services as well. We also discussed very briefly the solar panel project, which we are still waiting to revise. We are at Q on, and we'll speak more about that at next month's meeting. As Fred discussed, LightPath was, LightPath was already, I will move to personnel. We reviewed some upcoming personnel agenda items. We discussed some job descriptions, reviewed some professional development requests. As far as the budget, we reviewed some more categories of expenditures, preparation for the new budget in 2013, 2014. Similar things that we discussed at a board retreat in August. We also discussed the audit, which is underway. Building and grounds. We didn't have much facility damage, but we did have some damage at the Washington School. We had a geothermal system in Washington that we have applied for some federal and state assistance in repairing. I did want to speak about the warming station, which our superintendent already spoke about in the beginning. I think it was one of the best things I've seen get put together in such a short amount of time. Literally, it's been 24 hours. Thanks to Phil Nicoletti and Ian Abirmeister and our superintendent, we were able to provide something to the public that was much needed. I was there when the doors opened, and I saw the people come in. And you can see the faces. They were exhausted, they were tired, they were frustrated. They just wanted to be able to reconnect with their family and let them know that they were okay. It was a wonderful thing that we were able to do for our community. Our first day, we had close to 60 people. And the second day, because we had a lot of requests from the people that were there, they were so grateful for the opportunity to be able to unwind a little bit, to vent. There was a lot of venting going on, much of the venting. And then, by the second day, we had about 20 people, which I took as a good sign. The power was slowly coming up around the community, which was a good sign. So, I did want to mention, I thought it was an excellent idea that our superintendent had. His family also helped with reading and keeping the spirits alive. A lot of the teachers stopped by. We even had students actually studying there, using the power, so it was encouraging. Other than some policy regulation updates, we did review policies related to No Child Left Behind. They're not ready to present right now. We're waiting for some final information from the state before we present that, so we'll look at that at the next meeting. That's all I have as far as our administration committee meeting. I would also like to report on the communications meeting as far as strategic planning. I met with Dennis Williams, David Sorenson, Cindy... I met with Dennis Williams, David Sorenson, Cindy the Bonus, who are members of the communication committee, and we basically went over, it always got on a few months since September when they met, they discussed ideas for a survey, also discussed expanding the committee. We reviewed some references that we can use in putting together a survey. We also outlined goals for the next five years. In our October meeting, there was a discussion about actually formulating our goal and a draft of the goal as it appears now is, by 2013, communications committee will determine community needs and usage in relation to various communication tools available to the districts, including navigating school messenger, real-time portals, district web interface. The committee will utilize surveys and focus group discussion with all stakeholder groups to gather data, and upon reviewing qualitative and quantitative data, the group will provide recommendations to the Board of Education as to the best use for each mode of communication. In November, we discussed implementing this and also expanding the committee. We want to try to get a teacher and a parent from every school within the district so we can make sure we have a broad range of input from all stakeholders. We also discussed some more ideas on formulating a survey that we can hand out to all the parents and students. I also thought it would be nice to get the students involved and perhaps have them do some actual interviewing of community members, staff, teachers, and interview them with the guys on how they feel communications is working. Is it, is the message that's getting out there consistent? You know, we talk about tweet, you know, the kids took it in a different way. You know, we want to make sure our message is consistent, and the forms that we're using are actually reaching the people that it needs to reach. And I thought it would be a good idea to have the students involved in learning how to interview and getting a broad perspective, not just from their educators, but and their parents, but even community leaders as well. And finally, I think the presentations that we had tonight is good illustration as to why communication is so important in the strategic plan. We saw presentations here tonight, we're telling parents that are available on the web, we're giving you an email address, please get back to us. Obviously, we can't expect to have all of the answers, and we truly need the communities' king's foot so that we can make sure our children have the best education that we can provide for them. And that's all the reports I have.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone for the reports, and I just ask that those who recorded on their strategic planning committee, they could send their notes to Mrs. Kaczynski so she can incorporate it into the record rather than... She may have the answer sort of... Yeah, the committee reports are already on their... We'll have the notes in the... Hearing of the citizens. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Board regulations allow 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, but only after their instructions to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed at me as chairperson, and no one may address the board members in the meeting. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personal, directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, redundant, or participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address those persons. If you're heard, please step forward. Resolution I... Resolution I, if it's on resolution, if it's not on a resolution, then there's another portion of the meeting.
Okay. Is it kind of a...
Seeing no one stepping forward, we'll close this portion of the meeting. Dr. Regal, you move academic resolutions one through three.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to move academic resolutions one through three as stated.
Discussion. Hold the role, please.
Mrs. Danjett Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Dr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schiller?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Sherman, we move administrative resolution number one.
Thank you. I move communication resolution number one, asking for the issue.
Second.
Discussion. Was this the resolution? Did you want to talk about this resolution, or was it, because I heard somebody say something about a resolution? No?
The concern was in regards to one of the resolutions, resolution one of the House Men, but we don't actually have the report, so if we want to speak and...
It's a... To that, I want to just speak as a... Am I allowed to do that?
After the second part, if it's not the resolution itself, then it's...
Mrs. Danjett Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Dr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schiller?
Yes.
Mr. Schizado?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Schizado, we move finance resolutions one through twelve.
Mr. President, move finance resolution one through twelve as written.
Second.
Discussion. President, yes.
Yes, on number eight, optimum light path, and I do agree it's on the agenda tonight, that you move forward, but I have to say that I'm quite upset for three months. I've been asking it publicly at the meetings here, as well with the administrative meeting, that prior to this ever showing up on agenda, that we will have a meeting with the township to talk about a plan on the whole. That has not occurred. That's very upsetting to me that we're not as organized, we've met and shared service with them, and those meetings haven't happened in a while. We talked about this, we've had a discussion. Mr. Evans is going to be moving a project forward with fiber. I have checked with the contract with the superintendent, and as well as, thanks to Ms. Floyd, that we do have an out on this, so that it's about a year and a half off in her work. But I am disappointed that this is on the agenda with a board member that asked several times to have a concurrent meeting on this, but it being on the agenda. So I am supporting it because we start saving money immediately, but I would like to see this, please, be corrected in the future.
I think that this particular resolution doesn't preclude anything dependent on personal will. Secondly, our contract with Light Path had expired, and they were threatening to put us onto the month-to-month with a significant increase in costs, so that this really, this action is independent, in my mind, of what we do with the township. And, you know, there has been some discussions that have been on the township, and I personally have been in touch with Jason Kirk and gotten information from him after I had a meeting with, on a different matter, I was meeting with Tom Evans, and I brought up like that, the fiber, and he asked Jason Kirk to get positive, you know, give me the information that is needed, and in fact, recently, it was last Thursday, I had a discussion with Jason, and when it got so impacted the storm, and how, you know, I think there's a certain thought into redundancy and this could happen with township, and of course, Mr. Davis was able to have the town piggyback, you know, right on our system. So I think the design is going to be very important, and we definitely, I agree with you, have to work with the township to be part of...
Okay. Well, a couple of things. One is, we've been talking about for two months, the administrative meeting, this was going, this we were going to on a month-to-month, so it's still been at least two months, the administrative meeting, we knew that we were going to have to do this, and I agree to that, and still, yes, for the meeting, and superintendent, I'm sure, would support that at those meetings. I also did have a conversation with Commissioner Evans today, was not, and then the superintendent was there, we had the conversation, was not aware what Jason said on this or anything. In fact, he stated that through Jason, from, I guess, in conversation with you, that we might not be interested in moving forward, and the superintendent verified that conversation I just had before this meeting with Commissioner Evans. On top of that, public safety technology happens to be my real business in life, and I don't support that we keep two fiber networks up and pay bills to plan for the future. It's a public safety type operation, and that possibly when we do the fiber, we can also do some panels. There's a way to do a backup, but I don't care for us to still pay light path and have fiber in the ground of the town. So please, I'm supporting this tonight, it needs to be done, but I'm asking that we, in the near future, get a meeting set. Thank you.
Mr. President, Mr. Clark, I take responsibility for that. Mr. Square has asked publicly for this meeting. Again, as you stated correctly, this in no way precludes us. In fact, we did talk to Commissioner Evans today, and we are, I'm sure, but we will make that meeting happen as quickly as possible, because we need to make sure that the shared service is going to benefit the township.
Any other discussion? Hold the role, please.
Mrs. Danjett Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Dr. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Schizado?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Sherman, will you move personnel resolution one or two?
I move personnel resolution one hundred and seven.
Discussion. Hold the role, please.
Mrs. Danjett Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schiller?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Schizado?
Yes.
Yes. Hearing of the citizens. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed at me as chairperson, and no one may address board members in the meeting. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personal, directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, redundant, or participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board. First person wishing to speak, please step forward.
I'm going to go first, I sound a little fancy. Diane Volraven, 53 Lakes that I drive. First, I'd like to say that I love the super before, I thought that was a great idea on a separate note. My concern is, I guess, it kind of relates to transparency. When we have specific concerns, it'd be nice to have maybe some sort of a segment where those concerns are addressed in kind of an easy format. For example, you know, a couple of meetings ago, one of the moms mentioned the gifted and talented programs. We don't know where, or at least I don't know where we stand on that. I had mentioned some time ago about getting after-school tutor writing. Last year, I think there was a woman here almost at every meeting pushing for school uniforms. I'm not sure, I'm guessing the official decision was no uniforms, but it would be nice to have maybe a section, maybe titled corrupt concerns, where you just kind of say, okay, these issues already is last week, this is what we've decided or haven't decided yet. Just something short and sweet that would be easy for us to understand and follow the issues at hand, and to kind of determine what you guys have decided. Does that make sense? Issue number three, and I'm writing in yellow pen, so it's going to be hard for me to read. I wanted to know, well, I think we were discussing in one of the slides about detentions, suspensions, and expulsions. Personally, I feel like, and I don't know what the research is on this, I think that that kind of tends to distance the student from not only their education, they're missing out on being in their own classroom, and on the instruction, and it kind of separates them from their school environment. Is anybody considering some sort of a method to kind of embrace that student or that at-risk student, to try and come up with a different method, if it's even warranted, or is it even being explored? I don't know. It doesn't seem like it's a system that works. Maybe I'm wrong. Could you give me a little input relating to that, or?
Especially at the elementary level, they're going to do a lot of proactive discipline. It's one of the reasons the numbers are so low, you're giving the kids assignments, they continue to work with the kids, especially now we have the guidance councils in place at the elementary, which gives more and more attention to kind of demonstrate the need. At the high school, they've actually with this facility, done the same thing, and Mr. Kapow's quarter is going to push this, especially with HIV. A lot of times, the actions that have been taken have been documented, that they've been, they're against to work together, planning extra time, not particular detentions, and we're still looking at positive discipline, if you will, regardless of HIV or Evers. You see with the, even with the middle school, we're trying to get rid of some of the past ways of disciplining and making it more proactive. Doesn't make sense that a student breaks a rule and gets a free day off, as opposed to...
That's almost reinforcing...
Exactly. If you break the rule next week, you get another day off. But we're actually looking at that right now. Most of these have come from a lot of administration, from the teachers, who, a lot of this actually does go on to the intentions we talked about. See, high school teachers, especially, will give, will give detentions, kids will come to room, and there will be some kind of work involved that should be reinforcing the desired behavior, not the exhibit behavior. So that is going on already, it's something more, it's going to be continued.
Perfect. Perfect. Good to hear. Next issue, there's been rumors floating around that the sixth grade is going to be moving into the middle school. Don't carry the weight of it's happening or not, I'm just wanting to know if that's on the table. It may have already been discussed, I don't know.
The configuration committee is looking about how we should be appropriately figured. We have an ad hoc committee, it's looking at our enrollment, and we're looking at instruction, curriculum, resources, and so what I would say that is that, no, no decision's been made, and we are not looking to move the sixth graders right now into the middle school. What I vote for at the military service, to be playing initiative, we're looking at all possible options. Now, hopefully, it's even from tonight, but just at the initial stages, but the idea that communication is key. Before anything like that happens, the idea will certainly be shared, get the rationale where it came from, you know, opportunity for people to speak out, we probably have a forum, because that's a huge move.
I think that's what my concern was, was the communication piece, you know, because I'm not ready for or against it, you know, I know we're short on pace at the elementary school level, but it was a communication piece that, you know, from the parents, you know how rumors started, like, oh, they're doing this next year.
Right. Part of, again, I mean, again, a class was a big part of it, but the parents came up with some interesting ideas, some critical pieces, that if we were going to do it, things we'd have to think about a year out. So again, hopefully, what we said, we want to make sure we're communicating clearly, we're involving everyone, so we're not going to make a decision like that, leaving a recommendation to the board like that for any of our action teams, without appropriate communication first. I know a lot of people are talking, because, and I want to state it clearly, with the strategic planning initiative, a lot of ideas are going to be thrown around. That's the idea, get people talking about what we want to do, but we're not looking to take action without communicating that action clearly, having the appropriate amount of conversation around it.
Perfect. And then I have my last issue, and I've mentioned this before, I guess, sort of the strategic plan, because I was a part of that committee, but I still can't help but feel that there should be some sort of special ed component mixed in there, some special ed voice mixed in there, not even just special ed, but, you know, response intervention, those kids are at risk, those kids are struggling. I think that there should be, maybe not even necessarily a separate committee, but at least a member representing that population be involved in some of these committees that you have going on, and maybe one member be involved in, you know, in all of those committees, you know, just to provide that input, because I think when it comes to curriculum, when it comes to, you know, all these, the educational committee and all the other different committees, I think that there's different perspectives that have to be considered when it comes to children that learn differently.
On that note, one of the things that we've been doing, trying to build processes, not that it's going to change, but we want, this to be systemic, so that we do things regularly. Some of our administrators who run the program here, one of the things you have to do is put together a committee to head the program with you, and we have a forum that we use, which is obviously still draft, but that forum includes a number of categories that have to be filled on committee, special education being learned, to make sure that we don't move ahead exploring the area unless we're making, without making sure that someone is on that committee specifically to look at whatever area we're exploring from, through the lens of specialists.
Perfect.
We do the same thing with technology, with a number of the different pop gifted, those populations that are represented, so when we talk about anything, whether it be world language, or music, or pilots, bringing new series, et cetera, that someone is there on, and the forums are built that way, so when we're creating, we're making sure that someone is on that committee who can appropriately represent those different stakeholder groups.
Okay, but not only just like a special ed teacher, but a special ed parent?
No, 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 exactly right. Sometimes we include students.
Or a student would even, yeah, perfect, if they're old enough.
The forum includes multiple levels and multiple roles, and we try to make sure that they're all fit. With that, the same thing we did with the strategic planning, the full committee, trying to make sure that we had roles, that it may be apparently, it may also be a special education parent, it may be a teacher, it may also be a parent, et cetera, so that we're, we have those roles all in the way cross-pollinating, and that everyone's represented, and you can make sure that the conversation, whenever it needs to, is geared to those areas.
Perfect. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.
Oh, wait, just hold on. Just, a lot of the things you mentioned here kind of fall into the communications committee, and we are looking for members of the public, so I'd like you to think about it while you sit in the rest of the meeting and see me afterwards. Well, no, you did want some communication, and seriously, you mentioned a lot of things here about feedbacks of parents, and it sounds like you may want to consider...
Okay, cool. Now, I'll definitely speak to you afterwards, Brenda. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Anne May, 172 Alexander Avenue. I apologize, I'm a little nervous, so I want to read it.
Okay?
I came to this country where it should be the opposite. Nutley School System, however, seems to be different from the U.S. standard of innocent until proven guilty. My child was questioned without a parent being present. He was suspended for five days, that today is now 16 days. This is from October 22nd, and I'm counting the blackout days, without any explanations. We have fully cooperated with the school, we have actually identified the child that allegedly did the bullying to the, we told, to the principal and the child's study team rep. My child did not do any of the bullying. We have been on a one-way street, given all we had, and not getting back anything besides stone-wall answers, and I was actually told that we are not to go to the media or not tell anyone. We are still in the door. We have seen our son being on ceremonies, we slammed on Facebook, and in the school without being defended by anyone. We have now found that the child that was allegedly guilty is now back in school. He was never put through the horrific experience my son went through. The very school that I believe cared about education and children in general has turned its back and made my son, and made this entire thing into a witch hunt. I deserve to know why or when my son will be back in school, and I'm hoping that the board will not so meet, will meet also.
Mrs. May, I appreciate you coming here and making the comments, but no one at this table can comment on your son's situation. Heidi, I have to talk to you afterward, but we can't do that publicly, so for that.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
My question is about the food service that we touched on, Mr. President. My middle schooler, my middle schooler here in the cafeteria here frequently mixed from the ala carte menu, and I interest that concern to establish that, like, before the storm. She had chosen two slices of pizza, a Snapple, a water, maybe something else, and her account was short of funds. And what ended up happening, the cashier decided she was short on her account, and removed from her tray, a slice of pizza, a Snapple, and a water. And at the presentation that the charcoles people made, the lady stood up here and said that no child, whoever, go unfed in the district. That was a major breakdown. And I think I said to my daughter, is, when Neil had that, can you address, you know, because I sent a follow-up, you know, chain of emails, to Mr. Portwright, who put me in touch with Mrs. Botts, who responded to me saying that the district manager and the charcoles people will advise policy. Is that something that came up in your committee?
This is where the finance committee meeting, we discussed that, and the procedures are being worked on, and a recommendation going forward, and they said that, you know, no child, the child who get the basic, the basic deal, we denied that, but again, we have that procedure process, communicating the parents where they all have, we're working on a procedure now.
Because what also happened when we went back to school, it was, maybe one or two positions ahead, my daughter who got a cheeseburger and fries, and owed money, and was...
Terry Cork, 45 Hampton Place, spokesperson for the Montgomery Elementary Network. I just have a question, actually, for you, Mr. President. I understand in the elementary schools, and most of the elementary schools are run with their lunch program that's usually 30 minutes to eat and then 30 minutes for recess. This is what I'm understanding, except for Washington School that does it on 20-minute intervals. I'm just learning that today. But anyway, the new procedure that's in, that's a great idea, is now they're starting to institute fire drills during the lunch time, which is fine, because kids at any point need to know how to react to a drill, whatever it is, lockdown, drill, whatever. The concern that we have in regards to, and for what I understand, it's been happening in all the elementary schools, and there hasn't been a problem, except when it happened in Washington School, the students that were in a particular 20-minute period, they were, and that's when the fire drill was called, they evacuated, as they were supposed to do. And I guess it took too much time, but when they came back into the building, they were told that they had to clean up their lunch, because their lunch was over. And it was really very difficult for a lot of kids, because they had, some of them didn't even get a chance to eat their lunch, some of them had only taken a few bites. A student that I knew actually said to me that she only had taken a few bites, and she was not permitted to eat afterwards, and she was not permitted to eat even while in class afterwards. So she went really basically seven hours without food. So although it's a great thing to have a fire drill so that kids are prepared, if we can just give them extra time during, you know, if it just happens to happen, and I'm not really sure of why Washington School does it in 20-minute intervals, I'm not sure of that, and why everybody else does it in 30 minutes. So if we can just, you know, take notice of that and like allow children to eat, because the, you know, the concern that we have is not just for the healthy children, but also we have kids there that have allergies, or they're diabetics, and they absolutely need to eat, and they're little kids, too. They're kindergarten, first, secondary, so if we could just look at that. Thank you.
If I could, Mrs. Kirk, as I mentioned before, when we're talking about security issues and looking on the plan, I know that fire drills is something that we will be tweaking and looking at, and I did quickly look to my, I believe the fire drills, the intentions, hopefully at the end of lunch period instead of in the middle, so if you could bear with us while we're working out, you know, the plan and trying to firm up the details, that would be wonderful. I've also noticed that, you know, therapy meeting, and I hear you mention Yen Pan?
Yes.
Do they have like a monthly meeting where the parents voice all the concerns and share with us?
Well, they basically come to us. They don't have a, we don't have a monthly meeting, no.
Oh, so it's not like an organizational meeting, like if I wanted to get some, you know, information from the group?
Mm-hmm. Oh, that we could do, yes.
You do meet at certain periods?
Sometimes, yes. But most times, we get calls from parents, and that's how we deal with them.
All right. If I could just see you after the...
Sure. Sure. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to hear it? Close this portion of the meeting, and the all business.
Yes, sir. I know someone who's spoken about, and the Sherman spoke about it too, but I have to just acknowledge the team and the communications from the superintendent to the board members during the storm. We never, I never had to make one phone call to find out what the condition of the building was, what, if there was a problem maybe occurring with one student in the district, but it was probably the best communications that I've ever seen come out of the school district, where I had limited access, got some text messages, I had no internet service, I couldn't follow them on Twitter, but with the information that came out, it didn't make you want for anything. Ian, and Mr. Milak Delaty, and the other people that jumped in, and I know the Sherman was here for the warming opening, it was a great idea, you know, some different things, but I really think that the district comparatively to what I've seen across the state, did an admirable job above and beyond, and really spent time here, and they really deserve a lot of credit for that.
Agreed. Any other old business?
I, because I know I'm going to get, I've been asked this question, right? What is the impact so far on the school calendar and life this month?
That will have, Mike's Board meeting, as of last year, recall on the website, we actually put up a chart that showed, again, just a quick review, we built in four emergency closing days, and what happens is if we don't use them, we back them off the end of the year. So the year's never over 180 days for students, and not even 3 days, 180, 40 days for staff. What ended up happening is we lost five, we only had four built in, we lost five. But due to cooperation, the board, the EAN for short, all of our facilities, people, the administration, we have to open up on election day, and then the two NJDA days, we need three days that were unexpected and then calendered back. So for all intents and purposes, we've used two of our implement weather days at this point. So that chart will be up, we'll make a presentation on that break at the December meeting, so people can see. The idea of moving forward, not only do you see the academic calendar, but that that chart will start appearing in September, and just be modified as we do or do not use dates. But again, graduation, high school graduation cannot be moved because of project graduation. Once it's scheduled, that is firm. And legally, my understanding is we actually cannot schedule any days past that for high school, because they will not count for the 180 days. And so, we're kind of crammed in between the first day of school and that day of graduation. And so what we do is we build in those extra days, hoping that we don't have to use them, and so we can give them back. But again, one of the things I do want to make clear is, we make those decisions as the year goes through, those are administrative decisions. Breaks, those holidays, unfortunately, as the governor has certainly shown, they're fair game, we are required to have a 180-day school year. And that means if things happen this early, we have to look at the days that we can take back first. In this case, we're very lucky, we're, many districts could not, but through the cooperation of, and again, township, the commissions cleaning up the town, making sure it was safe, removing the state of emergency, and again, our facility being blown up, higher custodians than harassment, making safer kids, and the teachers being able to get back in here. A lot of people cancel plans, whether they go to the convention or not, to be here. We took those days first. Moving forward, though, if we couldn't, we would have to look at February 1st, simply because out of the responsibility for everyone involved, if we wait to take days, I think as has been past practice, out of say the April break, and we go through the February break and we lose the opportunity to take those days back, and then something happens in March, then we have a serious problem. So I don't know why that would have ever been the practice in the past, but we have to make sure we're being responsible for everyone involved, and as we notice, making modifications to the calendar as soon as we can, and informing everyone, go back to communication, as clearly and as soon as we can of those decisions. As of right now, we're not going to touch any breaks. We have two remaining days left, which is more than most districts, plus we have the final day of school, which can be taken as an emergency date as well, to increase the calendar, and we're just hoping that we have a winter left this year as we did last. But again, the thinking needs to get out and clear that unfortunately, we have to make those decisions when the information is provided to us, and we do it as quickly as possible so that we're responsible and understand that the talent fit with a microburst in April or May at one point, and if we don't have those days saved, we're really in a difficult situation. And the most important thing is to make sure that we have continuous learning for kids. And that's it. We're all here, whether it's the community, people running the facilities, and certainly our teachers, we're here to make sure our kids are learning. You know, in the 180 days, we can talk about how it even came about, but that's what it is, and how do we come up with a year that's consistent for kids so that they're prepared for the next year? And the last thing we want to try and do when we're making those decisions is chop up the calendar so that instruction is...
Because that's going to be the next rumor, the sixth grader moving, it's never going to say nothing. I mean, I can say no, but every PTO we have gone to for, and every phone call I've gone, I don't know where that rumor's starting, but it's going to be one of the real causes.
Did we hear that one in? But again, I don't think we're just making the public statement now. Our decision was to grab back those three days. And in doing that, we did more than everyone else, so as of right now, all breaks were tapped, and we just see what happened.
Yes, I guess this is still the business. I thought it was really interesting how we're incorporating program studies, all of SAT readiness type language, because I think that's important in addition for parents to understand how important that is from here. I mean, I, I don't know any difference, so it's difficult for me, but I think it's important to figure out a way to kind of convey that to parents, I'm glad that, you know, the program study really did see language within Catholic, within some of the courses, so that was a nice addition. Your business?
Any other old business? New business?
I did attend the school board convention, and I wrote, prepare something, I like the storm. That's a coincidence, but anyway. But I, I thought, I wanted to say first, you know, there was some interesting things to learn about different teams and clubs, that one day I went, they have robotics, and that seems to be like an easy type of investment we can make in these kids' extra creative activity with a big event, a large event. These kids get scholarships, they get really tremendous opportunities by simply being involved in robotics. I don't know, if they have junior version, junior high version, just high school, I thought that was interesting, and there was other vendors there, different presentations, presentations that extended day, I found interesting, there were a lot of green ones. But I went to the legal, and nothing was mentioned twice, once about Tri-Tech, in a room of 300 people, but also it was about the cell phone policy, and it came up in the context of that news article, and, but also talking about, we seem to be one of the only few towns that are doing this stuff, but it was positively foregone how that we have this policy, and we're discussing it, trying to report, and also in terms of, they're talking about like that in terms of all texting during meetings, and how that, the program is back, so that we was on the forefront of the most cell phone policy during meetings.
They had to see my cell phone go off.
Exactly. So, and one of the issues, I went to a Washington School PTO meeting, and one of the issues that came up was about, that they were happy that we brought back the days, and I think it was great that the union and the staff and everyone came in during that week, teachers' break, teachers' convention, and to do that. But there were still a lot of concerns. Even that day, I got a call from a bunch of people at the Washington School PTO about opening the schools while there's an election, and, you know, they were concerned about the security, and, you know, I told them all about the security issue, and I was concerned with the board, too, with opening the schools, but I think, and we always talk about this, but we don't do it, and I don't know how we do it, maybe it's only to talk about how to get phone locations out of the schools, because...
I just have to state, that industry's been going on for 20 years.
I know.
We don't have enough other buildings that are even handicapped accessible in this town to move them to.
It's the handicapped accessibility.
Right. It's been talked, and talked, and talked about, you know, in the old days, they used to be in the bar, we had them, you know, a lot of different places, but churches, kings, the churches and things, so they have to be handicapped accessible, there's not enough facilities in the town, and you just can't say, well, we put them in one spot, because people have to be, with the population distribution to get to them. It's a very tough subject, we'd be glad to sit and talk, we'd form a committee on it, but there's not enough buildings, we just did this, two administrative meetings, go ahead, this discussion, it's, there's not an area to go in, that's the problem, which really is an issue.
In talking with the commissioners, we wanted, we wanted to call and locate, have the building, but I was going to say, the way that the community's built is difficult in certain areas, but one of the steps we might be able to take, it takes about 18 months to actually make the advertising and all the law, but in some areas, some of our buildings are more open than others, but some of those buildings may be able to be diverted to other locations, so while we may have to, some of the buildings, we may be able to free up some of the buildings. The other piece is, again, we purposely moved election day away from as an instruction for this reason. We had also, again, the community implemented an expensive security, we had a large amount of extra staff positioned in very specific places, and plus, we had an agreement from the mayor to make sure that we had police officers in every single phone location whenever students were present. Students were not going out, parents were informed ahead of time again, and we had a practice run, multiple practice runs because of April, this year, with all. It is an ideal note, but we wouldn't open the buildings if it wasn't as safe as we could make it. There are a number of particular activities in the rest where we have the buildings unfortunately wide open, no one's even approached us about security yet, and so that's, we are concerned, I think we are taking them on under advisement. One of the things we want to try and do with next year's calendar is potentially take the professional development day as a segue, which pushes us farther to the end of the year, and move it to election day. So we have the buildings open, we have staff, we have no students, and that would be ideal. Again, should we be... Again, should we be able to store them before we possibly take it back, we may implement the security plan again, but again, as you expressed, if we can even get some of the buildings free, that would certainly help and even allow us to add more resources to buildings every year. But it is certainly a concern, we were aware of that, we tried to take every possible step to keep it safe.
Any other new business? If not, whereas the Board of Education is discussing matters in public discussion pursuant NJSA 1044-12, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education assesses a closed executive session. At this time, we discuss two matters. We further resolve that the results of the discussion be made public by inclusion on the agenda of the subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, or when there is any reasons for discussing such matters in closed session when they exist, and so long. All is in favor? We will go into the second session, from there, we will reconvene and adjourn.